We're ready to roll.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for November first, two thousand twenty-three. We'll start with a pledge. Okay, we're gonna go right into a public, public hearing on general assistance.
So I have, um, for each of the board members, this, um, so what I'm handing out, then we can go over for the public, is the general assistance maximums for York County for, um, twenty-two, twenty-three, and then also for twenty-three, twenty-four. So basically what happens is, once a year, the state looks at all of the, um, overall minimums and maximums and makes recommendations, and then the towns have to actually adopt the numbers that they set. Once the town adopts it, these are the numbers that we use when you come in and, um, apply for general assistance. We determine if you qualify for anything based on this. So just a very quick overview, um, on the overall maximums for households, uh, there was an increase depending on whether there was one to five people in the house between eighty-two and two hundred and thirty dollars. The food maximums were also increased between ten and sixty dollars. Housing max- maximums were increased between eighty and two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Electrical, heating, personal care, and supplements for households had no changes. So, um, those all stayed the same from last year. So those are the numbers, um, a little later on that you'll be looking to adopt. The other item, um, is that we need to adopt the actual general assistance ordinance as prepared by Maine Municipal. Um, it's an extremely large document. We are currently using the two thousand and seventeen version. Uh, this is an updated version. There are a lot of different changes in there, but nothing to do with the amendment, so. It really doesn't pertain a whole lot, but we've had everything available. We've posted the hearing accordingly, and, um, we're good to go. Open it up. Yeah, unless anybody else wanna open it up?
Well, any public comment? Nope. It's going twice, okay. So I guess we're gonna, uh, shut down the public hearing at six oh nine. We're going to our selectmen's meetings. Okay, warrant bills?
Done, thanks.
Okay, um, approval of the agenda?
I think we motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Minutes of last meeting?
We approve that. I move that we approve the minutes of the October twenty-fifth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Town administrator, weekly update?
Uh, the first one is an update that comes from the school. Dan actually, um, announced this last week, but, uh, Mr. Ross asked that I read it out again as it's, uh, coming up tomorrow. So the Acton Elementary School has adopted a new safety protocol known as ALICE: Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. Several other school districts in Maine are also using ALICE as their safety framework as well. Uh, Acton's ALICE trainer is Joe Jordan of the Sanford Police Department. Uh, Joe's a Sanford High School graduate, U.S. Air Force veteran. He serves on the York County Special Response Team. He's a combat care instructor and has trained hundreds of school staff, city employees, and nonprofits in ALICE protocols over the last three years. Um, he, he and the superintendent will be facilitating a safety forum Thursday, November second, at six P.M. at the Acton Elementary School gym, and, um, it is open to anybody that wishes to go. Uh, the superintendent is open for any questions, so. Are you gonna be able to attend that, Dan?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, good. He's looking forward to having somebody of the liaison there. Uh, next is just an update for the, um, election next week. Um, absentee ballots are still being issued. The deadline to vote by absentee ballot is to close the business tomorrow night unless you meet special circumstances as defined by the Secretary of State's office. I think we have everything in place on Tuesday, November eighth. We have, uh, Virginia Shea and Sheila Conway serving as our wardens, Bernard Broder, Don Van Syndrome, Nancy Ruma, Jeanette Burse, Gary Vronazick, I probably butchered that, I'm sorry, Acel Gore, Chelsea Kenyon, Tammy Crampitz, Anne McKecon, Virginia DeBoer, uh, working as ballot clerks throughout the day. So, um, just as always, we've got new staff, um, and I'm trying to train for elections, so I appreciate any window transactions that can wait, wait. If not, we'll certainly help you and sneak you in just as soon as we can, but that is our primary, um, function on Tuesday. Uh, lawn care bid is out. It's gone, um, it's on the website. We've put it on the report, in the reporter, and we've also mailed it to, um, six different lawn care contractors from the area that we're aware of, so that is out. Back to general assistance. Uh, we did have our audit from general assistance on Tuesday. Um, we got a letter from the Maine Department of Health and Human Service saying that Acton was in compliance with all of its requirements and got a gold star.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Sheriff's log, just a couple, uh, for October. First one is that, uh, an individual was arrested, twenty-nine years old, in Shapley for a warrant charging him for failure to stop and operating without a license. Next event was on October eleventh, when Deputy Solomon was called to Cross Road in Shapley for a suspicious male. He later located and the gentleman refused to identify himself. They eventually identified him. He had bail conditions that he was not allowed to be in the state of Maine at all unless for court. He attempted to retreat into a home on Cross Road, spent some time in the woods. He was eventually apprehended and remained uncooperative until he was brought to jail. Uh, ten seventeen, the sheriff's department would like you to know that they had a mandatory inspection to make sure that all deputy issues' equipment were in proper operating condition and fully functional. Their next notable event, um, was sentencing for the two thousand twenty-one Mother's Day fatal crash, the, uh, motorcycle crash. They note that the individual was sentenced to twelve years in prison with all but four suspended. He'll have complete six years of supervised probation, twenty-one hundred dollar fine, lose his right to operate a motor vehicle for ten years. Um, it was the crash that killed his passenger when he was intoxicated and hit a tree. Uh, last item that they, uh, reference is on October twenty-fifth, the sheriff's department was awarded thirty-nine thousand dollars for grant money to be used towards dedicated high-visibility traffic enforcement. I like that. I highlighted that pretty well. So I don't know where those are.
Do you have to apply for that? How does that work?
So it goes on to say that, um, this will allow deputies to work four-hour traffic details, focus on drivers who are speeding, operating. Uh, York County Sheriff's Department will make these details known, um, with high-area crashes and citizens that have made complaints about it. I'll inquire. It doesn't say anything for us, but. Uh, sheriff's log. Next is just an update. Um, you know that we've had an ongoing issue at the transfer station regarding one of the gates by the compactor. Um, the company was out there today. They did, um, note that they would be out, uh, before the end of the week to fix it. Um, Robin, information I didn't quite give you is that we'll try to give you a twenty-four hours notice. It may be up there when you're not open, but I told them that you'd meet them up there, can work something out. It's eleven hundred dollars. Full disclosure, it's a hundred dollars over policy, but this is, uh, an emergency. We gotta get it fixed, so. Um, we received an email from our assessors, O'Donnell's. They completed all of our tax stabilization forms for us to be reimbursed by, uh, the state of Maine. Acton is looking at thirty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. We had two hundred and three approved stabilization accounts, and that's the difference of revenue loss, if you will, based on our program. And the last is just, uh, to update you that the transfer station is closed on Saturday, November eleventh. It's Veterans Day, the policy. Robin's got it advertised. We've got it on the website, but mark your calendars. They will be closed on that Saturday. That's all I have.
Department head, community chair updates?
Uh, Will Langley. Uh, we got all the sand up last week. Uh, we ended up hauling in right around like twenty-three hundred yards, twenty-four hundred yards, give or, give or take a couple of yards, so, um, so that's in there. So what we had left in there, we probably got like three thousand yards in there, so that should get us.
So how much you got in there in total, you think?
Uh, about three thousand, probably. And then, uh, we probably got four or five hundred ton of salt left, so we're in, we're in pretty good shape for a while, so that's all.
Hopefully we won't have to use it.
Only.
We know that's not right, though.
Oh, I know.
Samantha Singleton, Rec Department. I just wanted to basically get permission from you guys. Um, with our middle school not having a boys' middle school team this year, we would like to go ahead and offer a travel team for the middle school boys, and we just wanted to make sure that we could get permission. Um, it's not going to cost the town anything. We actually had an anonymous donor come forward, uh, to take care of all of the funds that we would need to run this program.
What, what does it cost? Just the referee?
No, so it's, it's going.
Travel.
It's, it's travel, so it's going into a, um, actual league per se.
They're gonna pay to get in?
So.
But are they paying registration fees?
Yes.
What it is, is you pay a little sum to go in and play. It's like, it used to be Howard Sports Center. What is it called now?
I can't even remember. It's at a soccer, though.
You go buy, buy another turnpike. It's a big building. They got like four, I think it's four ba- four or five basketball courts, and all the teams from all over New England go play there. So it's actually gonna be a pretty cool experience for these kids.
Yeah, it's gonna help them, get them ready for high school, that's for sure.
Um, the donor there is gonna pay for the registration fee, and I think he's already said he's got basketballs and.
Uniforms.
Uniforms, but the, the problem is, is for him to get, um, practice time down to school stuff. He's gonna be affiliated, they're gonna be affiliated with somebody. So what they're asking is to be affiliated with the rec. That way they're, they're covered insurance-wise and they're able to practice down here to the, uh, um, the school, so.
Just make sure we have signed forms for all those.
Yep, they're still gonna do the regular twenty-dollar registration fees, um, and they're, we are gonna try to get a couple games and that, that they would have had throughout the regular middle school season as well, and be able to use that as the school as well if that's.
Yeah.
Got a coach lined up?
Yep.
Yep. Got jerseys, I believe.
Yep, he's got jerseys and balls.
And signed up, so it's, uh, they've done a pretty good job, I think, of pulling aside their hat because, you know, um, you wanted to make sure these kids were playing basketball. And really, sixth, seventh, and eighth is really the, that's a really important age because if you miss those three years playing basketball and you wanna go play for Sanford or any other school, you know, I mean, unless you're a super athlete, you know. I, I came from Acton. We didn't have any sports, so when I went down there, I mean, you had to, you had to try really hard, you know. You were way behind, so you don't want these kids getting way behind.
And then I have a new signup form. Do you wanna see it?
Anything different about it?
It's, did you see the one that most recently went out?
Yeah.
It's the same thing. It's just for travel. Here.
Did the legal piece change at all? Can we have twenty-four hours to look at it?
I have a question in regards to what was the reason why the middle school doesn't have a team? Would that pose a problem? Like, what would be the difference of having a travel team?
So the middle school, um, didn't have, they only had three kids sign up. That's all I was given for an, uh, for the information, 'cause it's, it's not a battle between the rec or whatnot, but there are students that had wanted to continue to do so, but they wanted a certain.
So if we didn't only have three students sign up for the middle school, are we gonna get more than three students to sign up for this travel team?
Eleven kids.
We already have eleven kids, 'cause they're all kids that have reached out to someone. Yep. So the disclaimer, all of that has not changed. It's the same at, that it's always been. The only thing that's changed is it's a different format, so when we share it out to the public, they're able to go on and they can fill out. It's a fillable PDF that they can do right on the computer, and then they can print it. And it has everything condensed onto it, so it asks for our groups that could travel, which is, um, three, four, five, six, and now seven, eight, if the parent is willing to travel for those. Um, it also asks for the pictures right up front to make sure that they're okay with us sharing pictures of their student. Um, it asks for volunteer stuff, and then it has the medical form right on the back as well.
I don't know. I saw one of them there. You had, uh, coaches, like.
Yeah.
Coach preference.
Did you, is that still there?
Yeah.
It is, so we had discussed that.
That's a really bad idea.
Well, we had discussed that at our, at our meeting as well, and everybody had voted on keeping it, so that was another thing that I was supposed to bring to you. Um, we all voted on keeping it because of the fact that if there's some personal dispute with another coach, that if, if, so if it comes down to like a personal issue, most people aren't filling anything on it.
Typically, in a situation like that, you, 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 the person would come to the director and say, "Okay, you know what? Um, this ain't a good idea. I don't like this person for some stupid reason, whatever."
Yep.
But when you ask everybody that prefers, well, I'll give you an example.
Start asking their neighbors.
I, I coached, uh, my boy in Super Seniors, uh, three, three, four years, whatever. We won every year, okay?
Yep.
All his buddies wanted to be on my team because we won every year. So if you put them on the thing, they go, "Well, I wanna be in Coach Mitchell's team because we win every year," and then everybody else isn't gonna be getting, you know, that, that's why it doesn't, I don't think it's a good idea. You're giving them too much leeway. You should be able to either do a draft or be able to put those kids on teams. If there's a conflict or something, then you make it work, but I think you're making it harder on yourself by doing that.
So how does she resolve this where her committee has already established their preference, and I understand your point of view? What, what should Sam do at this point?
Well, the committee, what she, the committee does is they give their preference. They vote on it. They give it to her, and she gives to us, and then we turn around and say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah."
But they, just so you know, it's already been on there.
Yeah.
The last few sports, they just.
I caught that afterwards. I mean, it's not a deal breaker, but it just, to me, at the end of the day, that just gives too many people, the hamsters start turning, like, "Oh, you know, well, all my buddies wanna be on this team. They're all gonna go for Mitchell's team because we won every year," you know. Just using an example of who we did.
No, no, perfect, yeah. I know.
I agree with that. Someone who has played sports and watched my niece, I think it's important that athletes and students learn that, you, when you get to high school, you're gonna get a coach, and you're gonna have to either figure out how to work with them, and you don't get that preference. And different coaches bring different experiences and different levels of knowledge, so maybe you really like a coach that you work with your entire time, but if you got a different coach, maybe they could teach you a skill that the other coach isn't excelling, and so I, I think having a preference isn't that beneficial for students. Like, um, David said, if there is a dispute, personal dispute, I think most parents would bring it up to someone and say, you know, "This is an issue. This is..."
Right, and that, and that's what we're hearing at the window, is people are, you know what I mean? They'll run into somebody they hadn't seen, and "Who are you writing down on that line?" You know what I mean? It might be a neighbor from a couple of streets down, or they just ran into him at, at Mary Grant or something, and all of a sudden it's becoming a, a, you know, a communication.
What you end up having is stacked teams.
Right. Thankfully, we haven't had a whole lot of them fill out that line, and there was a disclaimer, please note that this does not guarantee placement.
Well, I did see that. I just didn't wanna see everybody, 'cause you know how it works. They're all texting each other, and all the parents are involved, and.
You get the groups.
What does the board wanna do?
So are we gonna take a motion on this? What's the motion?
You know.
I'd say eliminate the line.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanna do.
They have, they have an issue between coaches. Handle it on a, one, one-on-one.
Yeah, they, they can contact you.
Hmm, they've got all the contact.
If someone needs a ride, they gotta be with this kid because they need a ride. They get the practice, and stuff like that, but we just don't wanna see the teams, everybody go to one.
So we'll, I'll approve the rest of it. I can get back to you sometime tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, and I'll.
Have a look at it.
Yep, I'll plan on at least removing that. Um, we have, all of our sports are, that basketball team will probably start practice next week. Um, they're going to most likely slide into the, the four fifteen to six o'clock area. That way they can practice as many days as they want now that that's open. Um, and then the rest of the basketball and cheer starts the following week.
Missing most of your background checks on most of your coaches, so.
We are.
Follow up on.
Okay. Yep, I know all of them are repeat coaches, which makes it a little bit easier, but.
They still gotta fill out a form in case anything's changed.
Yep. Okay, so yeah, you'll have to let me know which ones are which. And then there was, duh, duh, duh. So the shed, I'll wait on until that line item.
Yeah, I figured just in case, just in case there's a vote, so I figured I left it under, 'cause they can't vote under.
There was two other things that the board wanted me to bring up to you guys. They would like to do an Acton Recreational Committee Parent Code of Contact, a Conduct Contract, basically just kinda going over what the expectations are of everybody, um, what not to do, basically, and they would like to have parents sign it at time of picking up their uniform, so I'll give that to you.
Was it based on a particular town, or how did, how'd they develop this?
I believe they pulled up and they were looking at old contracts from others, um.
Other towns?
Yeah.
The committee did this up correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, that was, we, yeah, we all voted on it at our last meeting. Um, the other thing that we all voted on too was being able to do a two thousand twenty-four season survey, being able to put it out on Facebook, um, basically where we're still trying to figure out about, um, how many kids in town we have that are really interested in various sports. Baseball is our biggest concern, trying to figure out what we're gonna do coming down the line. So these are only three sample questions that were on it, um, but we are looking to add more questions to it. We just wanted to make sure that that was okay, that we could as well add that on.
David, can I have that one to put with the edge room review, and I'll get it to Oliver to look at?
And that is all I have for now. We're, uh, we're looking.
Thank you to the anonymous donor, on behalf of the town.
Huge thank you.
Coming forward like that, it's very, very nice.
I think the only other thing is we're looking at cheer mats right now, trying to figure out which one to purchase, but the prices have gone up since we made our budget, so.
Did you guys, um, I, I was reading through, through that while you were talking about the baseball, so I missed that.
Um.
What, what was the question? What are you guys discussing about baseball? How are you gonna go forward?
Yeah, how we're gonna go forward, um, kinda how we talked at the first meeting, where we're trying to figure out with the lack there of interest for the older kids. It doesn't give them a real team, so trying to figure out what we're gonna do with them as we go forward.
Did we talk about this before?
Yeah.
No, we.
I think we did.
No, you talked about it.
You talked about it at our meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you were at our meeting, so we're trying to figure out if it's really beneficial for anything over second grade to do here in town, or if it would be better to try to figure out something.
Have you reached out, like I, I'd mentioned, to see if it's something we're gonna be able to, you know, do something at Sanford?
I haven't yet. I've been trying to get on basketball stuff.
So what I suggested was, because the problem is, is we're not getting enough kids to make a, make a baseball team, okay? So, you know, these poor kids that wanna play baseball can't. So I might, what I, what I came up with was, um, if we can't provide the sport, we send them to where they can get on a team, so, like a Babe Ruth, while not Babe Ruth, Babe Ruth, anybody can anyways, but, uh, um, SSYA and all those teams there, and, you know, maybe the rec pays to get them on. Obviously, they would have, they would pay like they would here, but we would end up having to pay the extra.
Kinda like they do in swimming.
Yeah.
Yeah, same thing as swimming, but we gotta make sure that these, these.
There's opportunities.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you got some really good baseball players in Acton.
Are you sure we got the money for it?
Well, no, we'll have to come up with it.
If not, we, I mean, for the coming year, or, or this year?
I'm not sure.
Is that an issue?
It's, it's something that we didn't budget for, for this year, but if we end up taking and we look through our whole breakdown, we can probably take what we have for uniforms and all of that and use that towards it.
I think it's a great idea. I just wanna make sure we get the money for it.
Well, that's why I want her to go down and, you know, talk to, and see how much is this gonna cost if, you know, we have to put ten kids through. Each per kid, we'll figure it out from there.
Yeah, and we, we do have the option, 'cause Babe Ruth had reached out to me last year from Lebanon. We do have the option that they could go to Babe Ruth in Lebanon, or they could do the Little League in Sanford where we're established through Sanford as well.
So my, my, I would suggest having them go to Sanford.
Yeah, 'cause that's where they're gonna be.
You're gonna be going to school, those kids and everything?
Yep.
That, you know, if we can get them set up, because like my, my kids, my, my boys went seventh and eighth grade in Sanford, gave them a two-years head start, you know, before they went into high schools. Any, any way we can get the kids down there before they get into high school, way better.
Yep, 'cause we don't, we don't have the numbers that we would need to create a league where we're already absorbed by Sanford, so that's, that's our only program that's really struggling to, to stay afloat right now.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we got other kids playing other.
Yeah.
Other towns, yeah. Cool, so we're gonna discuss the, uh, building on another line, you know?
Yep, yeah, you got on the line item, so I'll be back up.
Okay, cool. Okay, any more department heads? Nope. Community chairs? Nope. Okay, liaison updates.
I guess the warrant fi- had a warrant finance committee meeting. Um, it was a good meeting, and I think they're off to a good start, and, um, pretty much it.
Ed? Sure. Nothing roads, nothing fire department. Actually, I'm working on setting up a meeting with the fire chief. Uh, just working on the schedules and been working with Robin at the transfer station on a couple issues.
Okay, Dan?
Um, just the same announcement about the meeting tomorrow at six P.M. Um, and I don't see Dan here, but I was able to attend the pumpkin handout, um, that they had on Sunday, which was, I thought, very successful. Great day. A lot of people showed up, and it was great seeing the kids still coming out in their costumes, so shout out to their grant committee for bringing on a suc- successful event. And that's it.
Okay. Code enforcement, I went down, talked to guys today about some stuff. Nothing major. Everyone's going as planned. Planning board, nothing. Rec committee, um, been in con- we've been in contact about, like, basketball, something like that. Uh, Mary Grant, good job, Dan, on the pumpkin thing. Um, and at some point, I think, you know, like the Mary Grant with the, uh, pumpkin carbon thing and the school thing, we, we, I think, this might be not the time to talk about it, but I'm gonna do it while I'm thinking about it, is I think we ought to have come up with some sort of policy that, um, in a situation we just had with the shooting, okay, what gets shut down, what doesn't get shut down, what the parameters are. We come into a situation like that, because like the pumpkin carbon thing, we, we're trying to figure out if we can do a drive-through thing, or should we go by the school, or what they do. We really ought to discuss that at some point in time and try to get some sort of, uh, protocol on what we do in a situation like that. So, but, uh, other than that, um, that is my liaison update. I guess we'll go down to old business, traffic detail, sheriff's department.
I spoke to the sheriff this morning. He called me, um, with some additional ideas, and I reiterated what the board was looking for. Thought I would have an email before the meeting, but have not seen it yet, so we'll transfer it to next week.
Okay, good. New business, November for the selectmen's meetings.
So we have five meetings, um, and this will be a good time for me to mention something that I forgot before I get in trouble from my helpers. Um, asking, I guess, normally when you have five Wednesdays, you'll cancel one. Um, normally I'd be selfish and say the one after the election, but instead we're gonna go with the one of, before Thanksgiving, if possible.
Yeah.
Um, and a good time to mention what I forgot under my update is that we are prepping for our second annual Neighbors Helping Neighbors Thanksgiving Dinner. Remember last year, we fed almost seventy people in this room on Thanksgiving Day? Um, had some great helpers, great, just everything about it, and people are already asking this year if, if we're gonna do it, so. We're doing things a little different. We're planning the dinner, um, of course, like we did, and then we're doing baskets by request, so. And there's some families just prefer to have the basket and not come out, so. We already have three or four basket requests and at least fifteen people on our RSVP, so we're working hard on it. We'll have a list, uh, together soon for anybody that wants to donate.
I did it last year. It was a good time.
Yes, I got you.
I played taxi.
You're gonna play taxi again this year, hopefully. Thank you. And we're counting on Tom, by far had the best pies there. Well, Kathy had the best pies there.
Oh, I didn't know there was a contest.
She won.
She won?
Uh, anyways, no, we are always looking for things, and hopefully Dan and Ed, we can bring in on it, and, you know, got lots of things for everybody to do.
One problem is if you have your Thanksgiving dinner after it with your family, don't eat too much of that one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And even if you bring something, certainly we don't expect to take you away from your family, but a donation is nice.
Yeah, no, I, uh, I probably ate a little much.
So you're good for canceling on the twenty-second?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Okay, I guess we're gonna be rec shed purchase. Here we go.
Said I'm back. That was quick. All right, um, so for the shed purchase that we were looking at, um, we have narrowed it down to the three sheds. We gave it a, our top choice, our second choice, and our third choice. Um, I'll share this with you guys after as well. Our top choice came from Hillview Mini Barns, where they can deliver it. It's a fourteen-by-twenty-four shed, um, full wood built. They would put the base down for us prior to, so it would be all the gravel base that they would put down, and they would level it.
They're doing that?
They would do that.
Gravel or stone?
Um, gravel base.
Gravel base, I'd.
Put a little stone on that?
I'd put stone underneath that.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a reason why. I'll tell you later.
Okay, perfect. If, I'm sorry, that's something you can help us with, absolutely. Um, it has one six-foot-by-seventy-three-and-a-half-inch double door, has one thirty-six-inch-by-seventy-three-and-a-half single door, and two gable vents, uh, and also a six-foot-by-four-foot pressure-treated ramp. So if we have things that we have to ramp up into it, we can. It'll be easy access for us.[1700.52]
Are there windows?
Um, I believe it had windows, but I don't see that on here. I can't remember.
Now, how much is that one?
So that one is ten thousand, ten dollars and ninety-five cents. Um, then the second choice was Crazy Moose Amish Outlet. It was another fourteen by twenty-four. Um, it's got a five foot double door, one hour of setup and leveling. The base is not provided at all, um, and I don't believe that one had any windows or any other doorways to it. That one was eighty-three hundred. Um, that one, I've never seen their build quality, so I can't speak on behalf of how their build quality is. I have seen Hillview. My father-in-law got a garage built from them six years ago, and the thing still looks brand new. Um, and the number three was.
Where is that second one from? Because they don't have like a display or anything to look at?
That one was way up Maine.
Ah.
Um, let me see if I have it.
Mm-hmm.
I might have them.
That's right.
What's the last one? I know there's a couple of other places in Sanford and Waterboro.
The last one that we chose that we liked from was EB Carports in metal structure ink.
And where are they at of?
I don't remember.
Did you go see that one?
No.
So you only seen one of these?
I've only seen one of them, because the other ones aren't always just local. Um, they were, it's a twenty-four by thirty-one, so it's a much bigger building, but it is, um, a metal building, so that was another aspect to kind of think about. And it would need a cement slab, which is not provided. Um, and a cement slab that's slightly smaller than that, which is a twenty-six by twenty-four, just to give us an idea, is thirty-seven hundred.
And how much was that one?
Um, that one is sixteen thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-three cents. That's not with the pad.
So you got, so it's nineteen thousand.
Yeah, so it's nineteen to twenty thousand.
So the ones on Alfred, there's one in Alfred, there's one in Waterboro. Did you compare anything? Did you see any other ones?
We were comparing pricing.
Yep.
Um, and then.
Yeah.
I don't know who else has seen them. I've seen a few of the different ones. Um, I like the ones in Alfred, but their pricing was a lot higher.
Then, so you got something comparable local, as long as you've looked at something else?
Yep, um, we went to Hollerin, we went to Shed Happens, that's the one, uh, right in Alfred.
Um, there's one right by the milk room in Waterboro, I think.
So you've been to others, but you chose, didn't choose them?
I've seen others, yeah, but this is the one that our board had decide, like, these were the options that our board.
Quotes on the others, or did you?
Nope, here, I'll pass, I'll pass this around so you guys can see it.
Well, the only issue I got is, uh, you got three here, which is fine, great, but you've only looked at one of them.
Yeah, that's the issue.
And unfortunately, you've got one here, what's it called, uh, the one made by the Amish there, okay? That was cheaper than the, the other one.
But it has no base.
But it has no base.
Yeah, and I guess.
No windows or anything.
Yeah.
Right, but on that one, and not, I'm not doubting what you said, but that first one, David, and remember you did all that groundwork when we set our store? All that base you brought in, that's, it's, that's in company. They delivered ours. I'm just, you know, I mean, I, that was never an option. I just wanna make sure that is in fact included.
Well.
Well, you know, I mean, there's, they didn't offer bases a year ago, so I'm just concerned, I just wanna make sure it's included, so we don't go over budget.
I, I, actually, they don't even, I mean, where they gonna put its flat base already?
So they don't really need anything on it.
All they gonna do is put blocks in there. What I was just saying was, if, instead of putting gravel underneath it, uh, I would put stone underneath it. What happens is, underneath sheds, when you put gravel, you get roads and stuff, they build tunnels. You can't build tunnels in stone, so it's just so they can't be, that's why I just, I, I tell everybody to do that. But, uh, I mean, uh, I have no issue with the one you picked. I just, I'm just concerned that the other one is a couple thousand dollars cheaper, which you don't have the base, but is the quality of the building the same? So, that would be the only question, because you're talking a couple thousand dollar difference, wasn't it?
Yeah, ten-nine to eighty-three.
You know, I, um, when do you need this? Are you gonna be using it this winter?
Oh, yeah, we've needed it, like.
So, so you're planning to get it in before winter sets in?
Yeah, we've, because we've needed it since last year when we first talked about it.
Yeah.
Because everything, I have a lot of stuff that's stored at my house right now, and then we've got stuff in the gym at the school.
Did you get some brochures or some literature on the other ones, so we can at least make a comparison?
No, they were all, I found them on, like, through Facebook and that.
Yeah.
Um.
What was the name of the second company? See if we can find something.
Crazy Moose, Crazy Moose's Amish Outlet.
And the place in Alfred and the one in Waterboro don't have any fourteen by twenty-fours, you can just compare prices to show them that.
Uh, Shed Happens is on there.
And it had a fourteen by twenty-four?
Um, what size was Shed Happens?
So I'm telling her there's two other places like.
Fourteen by twenty.
Right in town that have them, so if she has the same, if they're on there.
Well, the first of all, the next time we do this process, we're gonna do it differently, okay? We're not gonna get prices from people up in Callis or wherever they're from.
Yeah.
Not being able to go see the product, uh, because it's kind of pointless, right, when you think?
Yeah.
So from now on, we ought to at least have like a thirty-mile radius, you know, or something like that. Or something that they can give us a demo or whatever, but we're getting prices on stuff that are lower, but we're not choosing them because nobody looked at them.
We don't know if it's apples to apples.
So it's kind of pointless even getting those prices if we can't even take a look at what you're pricing. Uh, so, uh, like Ed says, these guys up here in, uh, what's it?
Alfred.
Alfred Hillview.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, they do a good product.
I know it's not the top priority, but I think aesthetics are important here as well, to just look at the building and what kind of appearance does it have? I know you don't make the decision on that basis, but as I've seen some of these around at various locations, they vary quite a bit in terms of how they look.
Where, where, where are these guys out of?
The Hill?
The Hillview?
Hillview.
They're one-eleven.
One-eleven, yeah.
Oh, they're right on one-eleven, right, Jackson Corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You want me to go take a look at them?
Who, uh?
Look at it.
Who made the other shed that's the other concession?
Uh, Maplestone. Was, was it Maplestone? No.
Just keep in mind with it, with the shed and, that you're gonna get down on one-eleven, I mean, it's gonna come, you know, all open.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have to insulate it and pull, you know, pull handling or whatever on it, if you just close it up some.
Are you planning on, you're not planning on doing any of that? It's just storage, right?
It's just storage.
It's not gonna be insulated or.
No, it's not big enough to do anything else in, so it would be getting, getting all of our stuff in there for storage, so that it's.
This one here is the one that, th- this is what the committee voted on?
Yep.
It's Highview, Hillview?
Hillview, yeah.
Do nice sheds down there.
They do, we can nice sheds.
I've got a Hillview shed.
Yeah, so do we.
I love it.
Yeah.
And I've seen other ones.
That's what ours is.
Yeah, okay. No, they do a quality job.
And the address is not on here. Where are they?
Is that right now?
That's the one on one-eleven.
One-eleven and Jackson Corner and Alfred.
Oh, okay, I think I know the place.
Yeah, it's on the right-hand side. They get all kinds of them now.
I mean, you're, you're vouching for them. I mean, I don't have to go take a look at them. I mean.
No, they make a, a very good, high-quality shed.
What was the budget?
Just, I'll do a stop by.
We've got forty-one thousand to use towards playgrounds, parking lot, and shed.
Table's till next week.
Well.
But you wanna, you.
I mean, if Tom wants to go look at it, then that's.
I don't think, look, I, um.
I'm familiar with them, so.
I think if we're gonna set a precedent though, we, we should start.
That's reassuring. You've done business with them and.
Yeah, I've never bought one, so.
We, we did business with them with my father-in-law's garage, and they were amazing to work with.
Is that right?
That's our, that's where our farm stores, that's one of those.
I think, it's three references.
I think.
I think references are fine, but like, if we're gonna tell everyone who comes towards us to say, if you're gonna get bids, you need to look at the product. We had to do that with the, um, for the transfer station, I, we've got to start enforcing that.
The transfer station with the Conex boxes.
Be consistent with these policies that we're gonna be enforcing.
Good point.
That's why I said, from now on, if you're gonna get price, at least something that we can at least look at.
I mean, even with this one, I think we should follow through on it and say, we gotta go and have a look at them.
Send them back to make more competitive.
What happens if you don't get it this year? Where do you store this stuff? Where have you been storing it?
In my garage, surrounding my cars, like my, our show trucks.
There's stuff behind there, there's stuff in the other gym.
Like, it's scattered.
But one week to be able to do what Dan is asking, I mean, that's not gonna do anything.
I think Dan's got a good point.
I don't think one week is gonna, like, if it was like a month or something, I could see that, but.
What's the delivery time?
Uh, they were twelve weeks, I think.
Twelve weeks?
I think they were twelve weeks.
You're not gonna get it this one.
Snow anyways.
Yeah, you're not gonna be getting it this year anyway.
Well, I was gonna contact them again and see what their timeframe still is, because at the time when I had asked, because I've gone back and forth with them for, ever since we started looking at the shed. These guys have been.
Built right now, or they have to build it?
That's what the twelve weeks is.
Twelve weeks, they're gonna have to build it.
So we can't take a look at it.
You didn't pick one just on site?
I've been talking to them through email and that.
They have a, they, David, they have a ton of them right on site. You know, they could pick one of those and deliver it a lot quicker.
You could probably, yeah, you could probably get one.
Waterboro by the milk room that has those.
By the milk room?
Milk room right across from, if you come out of the milk room on the right, there's that, um, car garage, got a big sign, welcome to some state. He's got them there, and then the, um, place by the, on, uh, two-oh-two heading into Alfred has them now. What is the name of the plant? Do you know what I mean? Anybody? No?
Sorry?
I don't know one-on-one-eleven.
Yeah, there's, there was literally three when I delivered, I mean, right within, I mean, she's, one of them's on there. She said the shed happens.
Yeah, I mean.
So Dan, what are you proposing? What are you, just?
I would, I would like to see someone have to go out and look at these, kind of like Tom said, there's aesthetics, there's just qualities, it gonna fit what you need? Like, you can put something out on paper, but until you actually see the product, and also maybe you can ask specific questions that we've brought up, um, are any concerns, and talk to somebody there as well. I, I just think that if this is something that we wanna continue to do, we should do it with everything and be consistent, because we don't want anyone saying, well.
Consistency is a good thing.
The only thing that I question with that, though, is there are board members that have already seen their work, that have already seen these sheds.
Well, yeah, but the, the problem is, you've only looked at one shed, right? That's the issue with it.
Look, it's a ten thousand dollar purchase.
Yeah.
We, we really haven't done like a, um, a valid competitive bid process, and that's, that's our policy. That's what we should be doing. So, um, I, I agree with Dan that we ought to be doing a bid on this, and, uh, if we gotta scrape by another year, I, uh.
We gotta find some places to store.
I don't know about your garage. I wouldn't want to put that on you if we got any other place we can store these things, that, whatever it is. What are we talking about? The mats and?
We're, we have mats, we have soccer balls, like, for example, when the soccer balls came out of the old gym and I gave them to the coaches, there was at least a week or two that all you could smell was must.
So, so Hilltop hat says they have a hundred and sixty-one on-site built and ready to go. So if we can look at the size that you want and maybe compare them to the other two locally, we can bring them back and more information next week. I don't think they're ruling it out. They just wanna make sure that it's built, it's on-site, somebody's seen it, and we have something to compare it.
I think we're on three different pages here anyways.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Let me just give me a week to work with it.
I think we're all on three different pages right now.
Yeah.
You wanna do a full bid process, you just wanna see them inspected.
I, I just wanna make sure that there's, there's backup. I mean, like, I, I get everyone saying that, oh, I have a shed, but people could argue bias, they say, well, maybe you're friends with somebody, maybe you just per, you know. I wanna make sure that the process is fair, that we did our due diligence in doing what we, and like, you said one person's seen it, but one person's perspective on what they see, can we differ from someone else who sees this, oh, this isn't what I expected, I don't actually like this option. If you have images or you have people that can go see it, they can say, I actually saw all three, I can make this comparison and make a fair and honest.
So, so Dan, you're, you're looking to have somebody look at them before we buy them?
Yeah, or, or even the bid.
Like the transfer station boxes.
Yeah.
Like what?
Like the transfer station boxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we just went through that whole thing there, and I mean, the only problem I have is, we've already gone to the point where we told them to choose from the three. Right? So that kind of, yeah, it's like, kind of bungs that all up.
Yeah.
So, so you, you've, you've taken three, and now, and then they turn around and say, okay, we choose it now, we wanna go out to the bid process, we're kind of going backwards. So unfortunately, that was done before we started doing the other, you know, bid process, like we did to Robin, unfortunately. So we gotta figure out tonight how we wanna roll with this, because we've kind of already, the only issue I have with this whole thing, is I understand that it's probably the shed to buy, but it doesn't look good.
I, I.
It looks bad.
I reached out to one other company that was local.
It looks bad, because, so if I wanna, if I wanna get something that I prefer over something else, I'm gonna get their bid. Then I'm gonna call up Vermont, I'm gonna call up Callis and get prices off people there, because we know we're not gonna go look at them, okay? And when you get a price cheaper up there.
They all gotta be local. They all gotta be local.
They gotta be local, and we gotta be able to at least put an eyeball on what we're buying. So it just looks bad. Though, that company there is great, I guess. I'm fine with it. We just gotta figure out how we wanna do this. Do we wanna go down and take a look at it, or do we wanna do the whole bid process?
If the board's comfortable with it, I'll work with Sam. I'll take a look at a couple of these.
Okay.
All right, and I'll come back at our next meeting, and we'll be in a position to make a decision on that.
I don't wanna hold this up any, there, this is twelve weeks.
Does that work for everyone?
This is twelve weeks, and we can get a, you know, maybe they can get in sooner.
I'll see if they got something that, because i- is there a particular, what were you talking about, twelve by twenty?
Fourteen.
It's a fourteen by twenty-four. We're looking for something big enough that as the rec continues to grow, we have the space. We don't have to enlarge it.
But it doesn't have to be that exact configuration, that, those dimensions.
No, and I mean, they gave us the price of a twenty-four by twenty-four.
Sam, I'll, I'll reach out to you. I'll go over what you've done, and we'll figure out what we can do to maybe do a little site visit to two or three of these and just get comfortable with it.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, and I think just for, I think if it's not in the bid policy, we should think about doing something and putting in there and saying that if you're gonna get bids, it needs to be reasonable. If this, because I.
See, the problem we're having is, is we're asking, we're asking the rec, the transfer station, all these departments to go get prices so they can make their budget up. Then they turn around and up, use those prices, because they think that was part of the bid process. Unfortunately, it's not. It's really backwards.
It's just, yeah.
Really, the only way you could really do that bid process, the, the budgeted process correctly without screwing up your bids, is call, call around, get some verbal ones.
Yeah.
Throw it on paper.
I don't have a pen.
Add ten percent to it, because you know they're gonna change. Then, after you get your money approved, then go, go out to the bid process.
Yeah.
We've put the cart before the horse is what we end up doing. So.
Tomorrow or anything?
We, I don't wanna screw up this. I wanna get this in as soon as possible.
Man, I get that. I'm hoping maybe they get something in stock.
So Sam and Tom, I've sent you both, two in Alfred, one in Limon, one in Waterboro. They all carry that, that size sheds. You'll be able to find something by next week.
Okay.
Okay.
I sent you four right in the same general area.
Perfect, so then it'll be, come back here for the final decision next Wednesday.
And we'll, I mean.
I'll get four of them.
They'll keep the Hilltop recommendation in mind. It's just gonna be more comparable, apples to apples, but I just sent you four.
Okay.
Yeah, because actually, the third one wasn't even really the same building at all.
No, it's, it was metal, and that's what, they wanted to have a metal option on there. But I've, I've looked at some of the metals, and I'm not, I'm not sold on them, because they're so flimsy there.
If you're gonna go that route, you don't wanna have three things comparable to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because the other ones aren't comparable to that. It's apples and oranges.
I know, I, I tried to get the pricing out of another local construction company, uh, Nest Construction, and he told me upfront, he goes, if you can get that price, he goes, I would do that, he goes, and he, he admitted that they were a good company.
Yeah.
Um, but he said they can't even compete with their pricing.
Yeah.
And then Hilltop, they said if you pick one on site, they're only three weeks out for delivery.
Perfect.
If you pick one that's already built.
So hopefully get some.
That's better than when we first started talking, because this is.
When you're looking at the inventory, you're gonna check the in-stock only, but they'll bring them from any of their locations, so.
Okay.
They've got a pretty good website.
Perfect.
We're gonna try to move this as long, as fast as we can. We're just gonna make this right.
Yeah, I'm taking your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you. District two, scope of work.
Uh, Will Langley, uh, so, um, we got all of our paving done. So, uh, we, we got all our paving done that we can for the year, so, uh, I got the shoulder machine coming for next week, so we're gonna shoulder, uh, Buzzel Road, Peck Road, and West Shore Drive next week is the plan. So there's, there's three separate scope of works for those three roads, and then there's one more for the end of Peck Road. Um, before they pave, they kinda did some ditching up towards the end, but, uh, it kinda washed out in the, in the rain and whatnot, so I'm just thinking, if we put, just put gravel in there, it's just gonna wash out, so I was gonna go up there and ditch it out and put some riprap in there also, just to kind of help it, because if we put gravel in, it's just gonna wash out, because I think that's what I kinda did before.
So are these estimates, Will? These aren't, uh, fi- uh, actual numbers? These are gonna be estimates?
Yeah, I mean, I.
We're looking at? That's fine.
Right, I mean, that's.
I would think they would be.
Yeah, that's kinda like, uh, the, our whole point when we started, it was kind of, just like a rough.
Yeah.
So the number you're talking on, this one is twenty-nine hundred, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, I just, I didn't see it moment, it's kinda, saw this little thing, yep, okay. Uh. The other one, this is for what road is this?
I should.
We have the funds available for all this, Will?
Yeah, there, there's, yeah, there is.
It's good debate. Anybody wanna make a motion on these?
Make a motion, we accept the, uh, scope of work for District two as presented.
District one. Is there a District one?
Yeah, West Shore Drive District. It is wonderful District one, yeah.
Here a second.
A second.
So for the minutes, West Shore Drive, Peck, um, Peck Road, sorry, Peck Road and Buzzell Road.
A second in.
All in favor?
And then I have, uh, one more thing. Um, today I went to a class for like the main local roads and everything, and, uh, they kinda touched on about, uh, speeding and whatnot, and, um, I guess there's, uh, some grant money out there that the state got that Pete Coughlin was talking to us about, and I guess there's, you can put in for like a speed trailer, but there's, there's a slight catch to it. But I haven't, but I, they were talking about it today and whatnot, and I thought I might bring it to you guys about it. I mean, I can talk to him some more about it.
Catch was?
Uh, no, I, we, he didn't get that far into it. He said if we wanna talk about it more, he said to reach out to him, he'll talk to us. But I guess they have, the state got money for like speed trailers and towns can put in for them.
That's how we got the first one, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know, I, that's, I thought I'd mentioned, I know we talked about it a couple of weeks ago, so.
We talked about getting the actual ones that you can put right up, like they have down on Grandma Road.
Something on this.
Yeah, so we, we're still, not to get off subject, but we're still working on, so that, they don't believe that ours is broken now. So they're saying that it's a battery issue, and they're questioning some of the IT work.
Who's they?
They being, um, Peter Coughlin's staff. He's got us in contact with someone. She wants five hundred dollars to come out and look at it, though. It's about four thousand, this is the exact same one we have. I went over, actually went over to the fire station today, took pictures of it, they wanted the VIN number and so forth. She wants five hundred to come look at it. It's four thousand to replace. Um, there are funds available, who told us that, but as I understand it, it wasn't until twenty-twenty-five for towns that already got.
How much of that five hundred is travel money?
I don't know, that's just their, their number to come out. It's our Southern Maine rec, so I wouldn't think too much.
I think we gotta look at whether or not a trailer or, like, we were talking, ones to actually go up.
But we're still getting prices. I mean, there's people just, it's like they don't wanna sell them. I mean, it's difficult. We've been week after week.
Sanford just put a bunch of them up all over, so they, I mean.
And then they, uh, and the town's Abago is doing like, I think what you said, Dave, they put, went out, went out, put a bunch of like pressure-treated posts in, and I think they said like ten or fifteen different posts, and they just go around, they pick the thing up, you know, a couple, every couple of weeks, they just go moving.
That's really the only way to do it, because I mean, the trailer, the problem with the trailer is, it's a summertime thing only at that point, because you're not gonna put it on the side of the road with snowbankings.
Right.
Okay, then you, somebody's gonna have to drive that thing around town.
Right.
Which, you want that job?
No.
Nobody wants that job.
Who had the public works that would've done that in Sanford that I can get a product from?
Matt Hill. Matt Hill will tell you exactly.
I just thought I'd throw it out there. They mentioned it today.
Oh, no, no.
Yeah, no, we'll take anything free.
I appreciate that.
Thanks.
And thank you for attending that.
Always one more thing, um, about the private roads and everything. They told us today that there's no spending money on private roads. Nothing's.
Changed.
Not, nothing's changed. They, they're in big red letters today on a slideshow, so.
Perfect.
So that, nothing's changed so far.
Thank you.
Didn't really think it was gonna be much of a change, but.
Okay.
Okay, well, okay, from there. Threw me for a whoop-de-doo there for a second. I have a lot of thinking going on, so. Uh, what, should we, uh, general assistance? No option.
All right, so you've got two. You're first going to, um, make a motion to adopt the new version of the general assistance ordinance, and then you're gonna make a motion to adopt the amended appendices as we presented at the hearing.
Okay. Dan, you wanna make yours?
It's text at the very top, Dan, I said. The italics at the very top.
The, for use when adopting that?
Yep.
So, I moved to adopt a new version of the general assistance ordinance.
Perfect.
Second in.
All in favor?
That's the September twenty-two. Thank you.
And I moved to adopt the updated appendants, um, without amending the body of the existing general assistance ordinance.
Perfect.
Second in.
All in favor?
Good job.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I got this one to Tom.
Okay, I gotta take a moment to see how to pronounce his name. I'm sorry. Um, make a motion to appoint Gary Bronzuski. How, how that's.
You did great.
I think that's right, uh, to the position of election clerk. Uh, doesn't appear to be, uh, effective November first, two thousand twenty-three. Did I get that right?
That did good.
There we go.
Second in.
All in favor?
That was my attempt to keep our Republicans and Democrats. He offered to serve, so.
My apologies to Gary if I didn't get that name correct.
I like to call him Gary B.
Gary B.
Gary B.
Is this the time?
Yeah. Let's go to public comment.
Hi, Joyce Backshee. Um, this is, I guess we can call it old, old business. Under pending, we have, uh, facilities assessment of the old gym, public hearing coming up. Um, the assessment of that was done under capital improvement, I believe, and when we got that, there was a little confusion on the committee's part, because we got a draft assessment. We never saw a final one. Did we ever get a final one, is my question?
Yes, and I feel like it went out, but I'll double-check my sent email and send it to everybody's home email account, since they're probably not checking the capital improvement anymore.
Exactly.
Yep.
Exactly.
Well, it actually is on, it is on the town's website. Um, Dan posted it today.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Either way, I can directly email it as well.
Joyce, you said something about the website on the calendars and stuff.
Uh, yeah, um, when you go to the calendars, uh, every month, the first of the month begins on Sunday. So it doesn't matter. January starts on Sunday the first, and then you go down, you know, all the way through, or February, a good, good one, okay? February starts on the first, and unless it's a leap year, you know, it ends on the twenty-eighth. March starts on the first. I mean, it, it's not continuous unless, uh, Dan's had it changed.
So December starts on Friday the first.
Okay, then that's, that is a change.
So it must've changed.
So it's been changed.
Okay, you mentioned it, so.
The first is on different days.
Yeah.
Was that your issue?
Yeah, remember at our meeting?
Yeah.
We were trying to, uh, set things up, and we couldn't do it. So that's been changed. Good. Um, just because I wasn't hearing anything, and kinda because of Robin and the bid system, am, am, am I right in understanding that for the rec department, they know what they want, they have a size approximate, they wanna look at local companies, and then it will be kind of out for bid, since that is our policy on?
And I think we, I think what we agreed was that I volunteered to go around and look at three or four of them and get quotes from each of them.
Okay, well, there will be, there will be quotes.
That there will be, you know, they will give, I will, we will look at them, tell them what we want. I'll get something in writing, this is what the cost is and what it includes, and I'll bring that back to the board, and we'll make a decision on that.
Because it's a little bit different. It is a bid thing.
Only reason we're doing this is because of timing. We wanna get it in before the winter.
And they, they really did do the bid process.
It just wasn't.
But the problem was with the bid process is, if you get, you get one, you only looked